Good evening. Welcome to the Lake Havasu City Council Work Session on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. I now call this meeting to order. This meeting is open to the public and public participation is encouraged in person or by watching it live on Channel 4 or going to our website at LHCaz.gov/tv. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
And Ms. Williams, if you'd like to call the roll, please.
Councilmembers David Lane.
I'm over here all by myself.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Present.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch. Mayor Kal Shaheen.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our only public hearing on the work session is item 4.1, Lake Havasu City's preparedness for the Colorado River shortages. Mr. Frosley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Shortages on the Colorado River are something that we need to be.
Are you? I didn't know I had that controls here, yeah. I was just reminding everybody that the shortages on the Colorado River are something that we as staff has been anticipating and preparing for for quite some time. In fact, in 2005, the city hired Dr. Doyle Wilson to be our Water Resource Coordinator, and he's been studying this very issue since then up until his retirement in 2019. However, recognizing how important this issue is to Lake Havasu, we did hire Doyle, Dr. Wilson, back on a part-time basis through a consultant contract. So he's here tonight to, he's got about 10 slides for you. He's going to talk about some subjects such as our water allocation, some of our water resource and conservation efforts over the past years. He's going to review our historical water consumption. And then finally, he's also going to discuss from his perspective what this actual declaration means for Lake Havasu City. So in the interest of the time, I'm just going to turn it over to him and get out of the way.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mayor and council, as Greg just mentioned, I am going to kind of go over a brief summary of what we have, how we got it, who we serve, the area we serve and such, and then go into some more particulars about our shortage situation, which, by the way, as of about 3 o'clock this afternoon, I found out even more stuff from Reclamation. So we'll see how this goes. So anyway, we, as a city, have received quite a bit of water from Bureau of Reclamation. Back in 1968 was our initial contract that we had for about 14,500 acre feet. But that has been augmented over the years up to over 19,000 acre feet through either merging of existing contracts that we have within the city area, like the Anizazi Pueblo Track that occurs on the northeast side of the city. And then there's another one that's down on Lake, not Lake Havasu Avenue, but London Bridge Road. But that's all been incorporated into ours. And that's our official contract with Bureau of Reclamation directly. On top of that, within the early 2000s into the 2010s, we accumulated another 9,300-plus acre feet from Sebola Contract and other Kingman water-related contracts through the Mojave County Water Authority. So these are subcontracts that we have to go through the authority to, if there are any changes to be made, we have to go through them, and then they have to make amendments to their original contract. But that's not anticipated. So our total is over 28,500, almost 28,600 acre feet, as you see. Some may ask a question of the .7, which is kind of an oddity within the water world. But several years ago, we thought a marina was going to be built in the channel that would increase the surface area of the lake by a little bit. And we had to acquire about 12.7 acre feet to equal the evaporation rate that would take place in that. We didn't pay for it, the developer did, and transferred it to us. So it was a freebie to us in a way. And unfortunately, that has been either stalled or permanently put on hold. I'm not sure. But that's why the .7. Our contract does include, we have to serve a certain area to basically say, this is why we have this much water. And that's our water service area, and I'll show that to you in just a second. Our entitlement is sufficient to supply everyone with water to the projected build-out population of 96,000. But during, what I want to emphasize is during normal water periods, not shortages necessarily, because we don't know what that looks like into the future. But under normal circumstances, up to this point until December of 2021, this is, we have plenty of water for everybody. In fact, if you look at this on a per gallon, per person basis on a daily, it's called per capita consumption, but it's how much a person could consume per day. When you use 100,000 instead of 96,000, it comes out to approximately 254 gallons per day. And today, we are using approximately 181 gallons per day with conservation. So we're under that mark quite a bit, which is a very positive aspect. This is a map of both the Irrigation and Drainage District outline in blue, the city limits are dashed here, and then the extended water service area. And this is the area in which we would be responsible for serving any development that takes place within those boundaries. So the 100,000, I'm sorry, the 96,000 population and the 28,000-plus acre feet would cover that entire area. So it does encompass quite a bit. Now, what have we, how has our consumption looked over the past 20 years or so? Back in the late 90s, early 2000s, we were using anywhere between 12 to almost, well, 14,500 acre feet per year. I came on around 2005, and so you can see it's bouncing up and down a little bit between 14 and 15,000 acre feet. And then it starts to decline some about 2007. Now, that's a combination of not only instituted conservation programs, measures, and public education, but also it starts that slide of losing population during the Great Recession. So there is a corral though. That's the blue line is our water use. The orange line is the population trend. So you can see that dip in 2009 in particular. And we have a slow recovery up until the last year or so, which we started to rise a little bit more. So again, we're kind of have increased that gap between population and water use, and it's a very good trend. And this is something mirrored in many other communities around the Southwest and other parts of the United States where we're getting into more conservation measures to help ourselves out. Who's using the water? Well, about 62% is single-family use. Another, almost 9%, is multifamily. So you combine residential together, looking at over 70% of the water use. But the other big chunk of the pie here is irrigation, from irrigation meters, that's almost 15%. And about 40 to 50% of that wedge really should belong in the blue wedge, because there are irrigation, many irrigation meters. I don't know, I don't know what it is today, but when I left, it was around 17 to 1800. That would make up that extra part of irrigation, because we count those separately with irrigation meters. So all in all, domestic use, home use, is obviously very high. Outside irrigation is also very high with that. The gray wedge that you see there is other commercial, and right next to it in the, in orange, is the restaurants and hotels. So that's the commercial combined piece to it. So it's a nice little chunk of the pie, but not a serious portion of it. And then all the others make up very tiny slices of the pie. So where we have focused in the past for conservation efforts obviously would be on residential overall, and irrigation in particular is one of the bigger components of the domestic use that we have. So what have we actually done besides acquire water over time? Well, part of acquiring some of the water, we took advantage of a program that the Arizona Water Baking Authority had, has in place. And today, we have approximately 120,000 acre feet of water stored in the Phoenix-Tucson area that we can access during shortages, when we have a wet water shortage. A wet water shortage, meaning when we actually have, demand is higher than the available amount of water that we would have normally speaking. So the 120,000 acre feet is there in reserve for us in an account. As I'll mention a little bit later, it's not a cheap way to get out of a water balance situation, but it's there as a placeholder. We also have recharged locally around 5,000 acre feet of treated wastewater up by the airport. That is in the ground in a form of a water mound. I won't go into the details unless asked about that, but we have unofficially have credits for that amount of water to extract if we need to as well. And we do have a recovery well that could start pumping that if we need it. Water conservation has been our biggest component, I think, over the years. We have a water conservation plan that we have to submit to Bureau of Reclamation every five years, and it's on the zero and five-year marks. So 2020 was our last one, so we don't need to update that anytime soon. Couple of years from now, we'll get started on that. But that is something that is something we need, but also what Bureau of Reclamation requires with our contract. But this also will outline certain tools that we can use to mitigate wet water shortages situations, and I'll go into that in just a little bit. We also have created a water conservation, now the S stands for specialist in this case. Originally, it was a water conservation officer. I'm not sure what they were offering, but they simply have that position for education, home water audits, and to a very limited extent, and to a very recent, within the last two or three years, grant writing. But the education component is in many forms, being at festival booths or going directly into the schools. Also, some of the other festivals that we have for kids, that we get kids involved with on a very intense basis and with a wet water festival that has happened in the past. The home water audits, though, I think are probably one of the biggest components of this water conservation effort, in that these free home water audits have helped many, many people find leaks at their house, both inside and outside, and have really helped upgrade our efficiencies overall. It's been a very successful program. The grant writing is in regard to some of the city government forward-moving programs and/or projects that we have through the Bureau of Reclamation primarily. Some of it's been through the state Water Revolving Fund, but most of it's been pretty much through Reclamation. Those include some water system infrastructure upgrades. Most of the upgrades are in-house through their funding, but there are some, such as the well on the southwest corner of this property, well, not well, across the street at City Hall. That well now irrigates the landscape in this area. So it's been a very good thing for that. Also, we have stormwater harvesting projects at the Public Works Maintenance Facility and Fire Station 2, and a couple of other smaller-scale ones here at City Hall and also down at Public Works in the form of porous concrete. Those are kind of demonstration things to have stormwater runoff into the ground directly. Turf reduction and zero escaping projects have been ongoing throughout time, including what used to be the grass area by the police station here is one good example of doing that. And then effluent reuse, we have done a fair job on that. We're about a little under 50% right now of reuse, of the total that we can reuse. We were at 50%, but we lost a golf course on the island. So that has brought us down a little bit. But we also added a park, I'm sorry, London Bridge Park, Beach Park, across the channel. And eventually, we have our sites on Rotary Park and other places as well. So these are pretty good efforts. We've also had a couple rebate programs to the public that were very successful. They, we couldn't believe the demand, mainly for replacing toilets that were high-flow to low-flow, but we had other items in that as well. And then I think around 2012, Kelly, maybe you can correct me on this, but 2012-ish, we updated city ordinances covering water conservation and water waste to strengthen them up a little bit. Lake Havasu City, I think another thing that we, what was really important for us is to be a member of the Mojave County Water Authority. It was formed in 1995 with the main reason to acquire water from the Kingman entitlement that they could not use for Colorado River water. So that was that, but we also were able to get water from the Sebola District and IDD and a couple of other acquisitions. So it's been very positive. That phase is pretty much done at this point. So I think the main importance and reason to stay with the Mojave County Water Authority is because we are out here kind of on our lonesome with Phoenix looking down very closely at our water supply, and we need to act as a unified group, strengthen numbers, in other words, to be able to protect what we have. And that is an ongoing issue right now, in fact, but we're working on it. So those are the main things that we've helped ourselves with and helped to lower our water usage over time, even as our population grows. Now, shortage specific. The shortage was declared almost a month ago now, on August 16th, with the release of a report by Reclamation showing that Lake Mead will be under 1075 in elevation starting January 1st. It is right now, in fact, so it's not going to bounce up with the weather we've been having. So what happens during shortages, just in general? 2007, an interim guideline mandate was put out by the executive branch of the government, under the Secretary of Interior, to say if Lake Mead falls under 1075, then a shortage will happen, and Arizona as a whole will be shorted 320,000 acre feet of water. New Mexico and Nevada and, well, I don't have, I'm sorry, not New Mexico, Mexico and Nevada will also take a cut. I don't have Mexico on this diagram, it was too crowded. But they will take a little share, but Arizona will take a lot more. If the lake goes down to below 1050, then we're looking at 400,000 acre feet. And if you look across the way to California in each of these first three rows, you'll see they do not contribute. They have senior rights to the river, and they don't need to contribute. But in 2019, I think it was, they finished with something called the drought contingency plan for the lower basin. It's mostly worked on by Arizona, but Nevada, California had to, were in on it to agree to this. And they entered, they put in, inserted some intermediate steps in lake elevation in which California and Nevada will start taking higher percentages of cuts, which is very good. Without California's participation, we'd be a whole different ballgame right now. Eventually, if the lake gets down to 425 or below, we get to 480,000 acre feet for Arizona. But you can see California's up to 350, and Nevada is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 30, really combined, it'll be about 30. These two, DCP and 2007 interim guidelines, they act independently in a way. So you have to add them up to get to that combined volume that you see at the bottom. So what happens after 1025? Well, they go back to the drawing board. We have no idea at this point what's going to happen. And I'll clue you in a little bit later on that they may not have a clue right now either, because it's just not part of what they're thinking about at this point in time. So what does this really mean to us as a whole? Well, according to the 2007 guidelines, again, if it's below 1075, we already have that shortage declared. With the shortage being declared, our reduction, again, to Arizona's 87%, 3 and 10 to Nevada, Mexico respectively. And this is where it gets a little fuzzy. The Arizona Department of Water Resources is in charge of our water, when I say our Arizona's water entitlement. Reclamation has given that to the state, but not totally independently. They have to consult with Reclamation to make sure everything is good. So they're going to determine how the shortage volume will actually be distributed. There are two different models. I really don't want to get into the models too much. There's what we call a straight-line model and a pool model that we heard about earlier today in our Mojave County Water Authority meeting. And they mean two different things, but I don't have this in this presentation, because this is already set up. But what this really means for 2022 for us is that there will be no impact to us or any other on-river P4 contractor for the first tier of shortage. That's pretty much a guarantee. The problem is, I talked with both agencies together on the same Zoom call, ADWR and BOR, in early August, and they could not tell me how this was going to be broken down. They were still working on it. I called again today to find out about that, but also about, we have to submit a water order for 2022, which is ideally due today, I'm sorry, tomorrow, but we have not received any letters from Reclamation. We should receive those in the next two weeks. That's what I was told today. There'll be a letter on declaring the shortage and what that means to us, and then the paperwork that goes with making the water order. And then we'll set up a consultation with them in early to mid-October for that. So we know we're not going to get hit this year by any means. But for 2023 and beyond, if we go into a second tier of shortage, and it's the projection for August, it shows it's very close to that happening. Tomorrow, Bureau of Reclamation will put out their newest forecast. They do it every month, and we'll find out if that has changed at all. Since it hasn't really rained a lot in this region, and it hasn't snowed at all yet, and it's been very dry up in the Rockies, that is not a great forebearer for a great snowpack season and melt season. So we'll just have to wait and see. You never know what's going to happen. So what they are doing, and I mean they, ADWR and BOR, they're planning, they're basically developing a plan of contingencies of shortage sharing. They're using the 2007 guidelines, they're going to use the DCP, but they're going to base it on water volumes ordered for each year. That might be okay, but there is a, there's a little caveat in that that I might come back to in a second. The use of intentionally created surplus credits that have been left in Lake Mead. Some water contractors that are in Nevada and in Arizona have, in the past, in the fairly recent past, have intentionally left some water back in Lake Mead, and not use it for that year. So some farmers do it, have done this, and Southern Nevada Water Authority has done this, CAP is doing this. So that's extra water for them. So they have to take that into account, because that could lower Lake Mead even further if they all take it at once, and that's not good for us. So it's complicated, in other words. Then, of course, they look at the basin hydrology. Is there room for improvement? Is it going to stay the same? Is it going to worsen? They've got to put all this together. And I think this is going to take a while for them to actually figure this out in such a way that we can understand how they're going to judge what's going to happen. So if there is, again, this model that ADWR is using that shows that if they take all this into consideration from today's, not from future, but from today's situation or conditions, we might not have any shortages directly on us, even in the third tier. That's a possibility. Is it actually going to happen? I would not hold my breath on that, just because there's no crystal ball. And things could change on a dime, and we just don't know what's going to happen. So with a cautionary tale that right now, it looks okay for us for the first three tiers, but we're not sure, 100% sure, at least I'm not, for that. And then, coming back to our water conservation plan, we put into the plan five different, what I call tool, it's a toolbox of things that we could do at the council's discretion, depending on our situation. So let's just do an imaginary scenario where our demand is 15,000 acre feet, but Reclamation says, sorry, guys, you're only going to get 14,500 acre feet. So it's only 500 acre feet difference. It's not much. We might want to instill some voluntary water conservation measures to say, if you guys do this, we could save this amount, and we'll be fine. Everything will be good. If it's a much larger deficit or difference, then we may need to go into some mandatory measures. And these measures are in kind of an order of increased cost. And so water rate increases have been used in the past here in this town to instill decreasing our water use. That hitting the pocketbook works everywhere, seems like. We can order water stored through the Arizona Water Baking Authority. That is certainly an option. That is a fairly costly option. They, what happens with that is that water stored in Phoenix is pumped out of the ground, sold locally, and then we continue pumping like we normally do right here, which is great. One caveat, we have to replace that water at some point, and that water is not going to be cheap. I don't know where we're going to get it, especially in a shortage. You're certainly not going to get it. So when a shortage is ended, then we have to figure out how to pay back. Either you find the water or you pay market price, you know, whatever that will be. So that's going to be something to think about. And then the last one, and most restrictive, would be water rationing. And that is a model that's used in Southern California that has worked. No one likes it, not even the people who are instituting the rationing. But to set something up like that would be, you would have to have a lot in place to be able to do it correctly. What they have done in Southern California is set up a telemetry transmitting system of water meters throughout their water service area, so they get instant knowledge of what the water use is. That's number one. Number two, they set up a website or something similar to that in which everyone would have an account that they can log into and know what their real time water use is, so they could, so each individual could track it. And with that together, they can understand who's using too much, who's not. And they, in those communities, have put hefty fines on people using more than what they're supposed to. So again, highly controversial, I'm sure, and it needs to be very efficiently set up, you know, and well educated, I guess. You've got to let a good public outreach to be able to get that in place. So nothing that I would want to do anytime soon, but this is kind of the order. Now, while we have that, that's great, but what we don't have is a way to implement any of these measures in a way that we can have some confidence in doing this. So there's, we need some sort of action plan or mitigation plan that would need, that would put these all, tie them up real nicely and be efficient about it, and also be fair as well. So we need something in place to detail the intricacies of each of these measures, how to advance a measure to the public, in other words, a lot of public outreach, what potential consequences or repercussions might be when a measure is used. To understand it, we don't want to just do something that's, oh, no, we didn't think of that. So, you know, something, again, be very well thought out, and what conditions are present to start or stop a particular measure. That might be somewhat clear in a lot of cases, but there may be some gray areas as well where we might have to think about how that works. I mean, I'm sure there's a few other things to talk about here. I haven't thought of them yet, but an action plan is something I think needs to be put in place to make. in place to make this work properly. And my recommendation to the council is to develop that implementation plan for various stages of shortage. And then once it's drafted up, put it out there and let people rip it up or do what they do. And, and, and this is talking from experience, by the way. So anyway, to present it to the community for comments and then finalize it and develop an outreach program to, for continuing education so people don't forget type of thing. So those are basically the steps that I would recommend. There may be some others, again. So that's it. If, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Wilson, for presenting this and going through and giving us some of the history and where we've been. I think one of the important messages is that Lake Havasu City really has been a leader in, in getting in front of this. So all the way back in the nineties, identifying water sources and what water allocations or allotments we would need that support, were supported by the general plan. And the general plan, of course, is a document that's created every 10 years and then ratified by the voters. Most recently, our general plan was adopted in 2016. And so we have those water resources, but in, in a time of a shortage like this, this is the first time that we've had a declared shortage. So what does that look like? And I think having certainty for, for people is, is a good thing. Certainly through all of your efforts, we have a water conservation plan. We have conservation measures. It's, it shows that our citizens are engaged in it just by the, as the population's gone up, the water usage has gone, gone down. Efforts of conservation of the city as well as, as the citizens taking part in understanding the importance of it. Lake Havasu City also is a leader when it comes to irrigation and landscaping and those types of things. And we've done a lot of efforts as a community, both in our, our use at homes as well as our use within the city with affluent waters and those types of things. So this isn't the first time we're talking about it, but now that it's here, we need to go to the next level, the next step so that we do have that certainty for residents and, and our business community about what that looks like. And certainly Dr. Wilson's recommendation of, of, you know, setting up some sort of a plan for that is something that I certainly could support and think would be the next logical step for, for that to happen. And then also give the engagement of our citizens to get their input on, on what they are willing to and what's palatable for them. And then, of course, continue to be watchful on what's happening in the, the whole basin for, for water and what that looks like. So we, we're, we're in control of Lake Havasu City, but we still have the federal government with BOR, Bureau of Reclamation, and we have Arizona Department of Water Resources at the state level that will have impacts as well. So again, thank you for, for those comments. I'll open it up to council for, for specific questions for Dr. Wilson, and we can then talk about steps forward, if any of the members of council have questions.
I have one talking about the water meters. What would it take for us to get, I mean, this might be for Greg. What would it take for Havasu to get on that technology? I know with electricity, we can put apps in our panels and do all that thing. And I know like APS in other cities, for example, they have, you can pull up your water, your electric usage, you know, right away from the meter. What, what would it take for us to be able to do that in Havasu or make that an option for some people so they can, those that want to monitor their water usage a little bit better? Is that technology feasible? Is it something for the whole city?
Yeah, great question. We, we have received a few grants from BOR on upgrading our water meters as it stands today, but more from a perspective for us to be able to electronically get it. And they're also more accurate for, for usage. But, you know, to be able to track it on the go, I don't know who would, Dr. Wilson, do you have an answer to that? Or is that technology available or maybe?
Well, Greg is probably more up to date, but I can give you just a quick history. Yes, we have asked for grants in the past, and we've had a regular meter upgrade program ongoing forever. And so we do, we're replacing old meters, I think at twenty, twenty years, fifteen, twenty years old. But we have found that replacing the whole city and putting in transmitters in, which all these, by the way, all these new meters have the capability of doing that. But then we, then we have to have receivers. We have to have a, a kind of a coalition of, of data gathering that goes with that. And that's, we've, we've tested, not we've tested, we've actually asked how much it costs throughout the years. And of course, the price keeps rising each year, but we're looking at several, I don't know, in the past, it was three to five million dollars. It probably is a lot more today. I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of councils, Doyle had a very comprehensive answer to that, which is why I was walking back. I thought he answered that well. But we are doing that evaluation right now at the request of the city manager to try to pinpoint that number, depending on who you ask, you know, wildly different numbers. So we're, we're trying to go through that evaluation right now so we can present that to the city manager. We would like to get there also, especially on the, on the streets that don't have the shared bike lane, Tacoma, Kiowa, the high speeds of traffic. And we've got a little meter reader out there, you know, reading those meters. So we would like to, our desire is to also get to that technology.
That's a great point. You don't even think about some of those streets like that, that we have, the safety of our meter readers are out there. So any other questions?
Mayor question.
Councilmember Campbell?
I would like to see a little bit, a long-term plan put into place. And does anybody here have any information on those solar fluent evaporation systems? I've done, as just a layman out here, I've actually been studying a lot of it, how you can get distilled water out of affluent water with solar. And that's about all I know, and that's why you're here, hopefully to give us more information.
Well, I'm afraid I don't know a lot about that technology. Are you talking about solar usage that includes boiling water and then what's left over? Most, that technology is, I would, I would actually say that technology is kind of almost passe at this point, in favor of photovoltaic technology because it's cheaper overall. It produces no waste whatsoever, and it, it's something that has been more commonplace installations. If you go up to Vegas, you can see they've vastly expanded their photovoltaic system for Boulder City and Vegas and such. That's just one example. And a lot of the other new systems that are coming online are, don't use a lot of water because they, it's just not something that we have a lot of to, to use in this area. Now, I know the project up on I forty and ninety five, if that ever gets going, they had originally planned to do something like that. But I'm not sure if they're still planning to do that because photovoltaic has become much cheaper overall to do that. So I'm not sure about the, that portion, portion of it, but, and I don't see us using it here in, in town very much at all. However, we do have evaporative coolers. And one of our water, rainwater harvesting projects that we have, actually two of them, one at Public Works Facility and at Forest Station Two, we took advantage of the high usage of water evaporative coolers instead of just wasting it into the sewer. We're, we're putting it in tanks and then using that for irrigation for landscaping in that area. And that, and that is something that could be done more. We've looked into it, both for the Aquatic Center. I'm sorry, I'm blanking out on the big industry we have right now that makes plastics. Sterlite, thank you. I don't know why that, anyway, they have giant evaporative coolers. That, that would be great, but there's no landscaping around them and building infrastructure pipelines. In other words, away from there to do things might be prohibitively expensive. The other aspect of reuse that I think is, well, it's been on the table for a long time, is a, a potential pipeline from the North Plant through the Wapa easement all the way to Sarah Park. We produce enough effluent to pump that uphill a little bit, and then the rest of it's gravity fed for most of the city. And then you could do tributary or truncation lines down to the schools, down to parks, Sarah Park in particular, every, almost every park in the city except for Yonder Park is below that pipeline, that proposed pipeline system. So that would be a really, to me, once you get the pipeline built, which is expensive, would be a really good way to increase our water diversity in a way to lessen our dependency on Colorado River water.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I, that was kind of the question, he kind of led into the question I was going to ask is how can we get to the point where we are using one hundred percent or close to our affluent water? And, and what would that cost, you know, to, to, the plan that he just outlined, what would that look like? And how could we implement something like that?
The cost aspect has been our problem. We, as well as pressure problems in some places like Rotary Park. We, we had Rotary Park plumbed, ready to go. And we looked at the cost when we bid out the first time. It was prohibitively expensive just to do that. And then we have some pressure problems there as well. But I, with everything escalating these days, I couldn't tell you, twenty million dollars for maybe a pipeline, I don't know, at this point. That's just a pure guess.
How, how much do we pay? Because we pay for the affluent we don't use. Is that correct?
No. No, we don't pay for the effluent. What happens with the water after we use it and it's treated at the wastewater treatment plants? It's either put in percolation ponds at the island, in a pond at Mulberry for reuse on the Walnut Bridge Golf Course, or at the North Plant, we either inject it in the ground or send it to the Refuge Golf Course, which I hear is up for sale. So I'm not sure how much longer that's even going to be. But we, we have a lot stored in the ground. I think the more we store in the ground, the better for future recovery use for whatever we want to. Again, to get, we might have to have certain infrastructure built if we want to use it for more than just irrigation. Along the highways been proposed for ages, and we've just, it's been, I guess the cost benefit to that has, has been too high as well. So there is a cost problem to all this, just because we have distances.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, I'm going to try to word this. So I'm understanding with our population limit that we're able to grow to ninety six thousand when we're not during a shortage. And as we all can see, we're doing a lot of developing right now. So where does that fit in to our plan if we do in, with controlling what development looks like? Because with more development means more population if we're already at a shortage. So how does that fit in there?
Well, the shortage is, is the monkey in the wrench, wrench, yeah, wrench in the system, basically, because we don't know how fast it's going to happen. We know next year we're going to be in a shortage. We're not impacted, we're fine. But we don't know how fast it's going to deepen. Because as Lake Mead decreases, it's V-shaped. Less water evaporated each time you have bigger amount of vertical change. In other words, we're going to, we could get below ten twenty-five very quickly. And if we do, then we have the situation where we don't know what's going. They don't have that in the plans. What's going, they have to go back and renegotiate. And when I say they, the states and the federal government are going to have to figure out how this is all going to work. Because it's just a simple matter of arithmetic in this case of, of how much water we have. So we can, it's really up to city council, I guess, in that how much do you want to develop, how quickly? And how far along do you want to go, knowing that that's that uncertainty of water? Right now, it looks, it looks fine. We're, we're doing good. Twenty, thirty years from now, it's, it's, no one can see that far into the future at this point. So that's a hard nut to crack. We do want to grow, obviously, but to what limit? I mean, do we want to do that theoretical ninety six thousand? Or do we want to start putting on the brakes at sixty-five? Or I don't know. I mean, that's, that's for someone else to really cogitate and, and understand.
Well, there's one, mayor question.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
There's one issue that's just came up that I think we're all going to be talking about here pretty soon, is the new weight water rate study and the way we did it. And we need to take a look at the apartments and condo complex portion of it because it does not encourage saving water at all with the base rate. And I believe everybody here, or I'll just say for myself, I believe that we had no intention of tripling sewer rates to apartment complexes and condo complexes on sewer and base, removing flow rates and tripling the rent and in return, not encouraging them to reduce water usage. I have been told that Lake Shore Village, the condo complex that I'm in uses very little water use while we also put over a million dollars worth of infrastructure and sewer and water and upgraded everything. And now they're telling us, congratulations, you're going to pay another five thousand dollars a month for doing all of that work. So I would love for us to take a closer look at that, and we can discuss that later. But I don't think that's helping us, and it's only going to hurt our community and bankrupt our condos and apartments.
All right, we are getting a little short on time. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? All right, seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any further discussion. Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
So I just want to go back to the question that I had because I do think it's really important that if that is going to be like a council decision, but I think it's something we definitely have to, and I know we don't want to hear about not growing, but obviously we are going to have to address it. I mean, we're in the process of opening up rezoning areas and, and talking about new development. And if we're talking water shortage, we really need to talk about that first, about what we should be developing. So I really think it's a conversation in the council if that's what he's saying we need to talk about, we should be talking about that.
Yeah, no, great point. But as Dr. Wilson said, that's a thirty and forty year span of time. So I think if we give direction to develop a plan for the various stages, so give certainty to our community to understand exactly what that looks like, what water conservation measures we as individual citizens we would be taking or, or people that would be developing in, that's the conversation we're starting today. So we, we know that's the case. Our plans that we've had in, in place up until today have got us forward in a really good way. We, we were very smart and, and leaders in, in a way to ensure we had water. And now we need to take it to the next level now that shortages are upon us.
Didn't you say that in 2023 that will already be, that we could possibly be at the second tier already, though?
That's a possibility.
So it could be sooner than thirty years. I'm just saying, I think it's really something we need to talk about.
But there's also for, for all the way up to a third tier shortage, there might be no, no impact on our wet water use at all. Not, not to say that we shouldn't have a plan to conserve water and be good stewards of that water, so that we do have future availability for that. But we're starting those conversations now to engage the public to be able to put that plan in place on, on, again, what they're willing to do as citizens, what the community is willing to do as a whole, and then what efforts the city could do augmented with some of, of these affluent lines and additional pipelines throughout the community. We need to take a broad approach to this at a very high level and then understand what, what areas we can work on to ensure that we have water futures for, for our community. Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Thanks, sir. I just kind of wanted to reiterate what you had said. And based on what Dr. Wilson has said, and I was telling someone in the audience earlier, Dr. Wilson's forgot more about water than I'll ever know. And so I appreciate your expertise. And what you have said is actually encouraging to me that we're fine right now. And if there may be another shortage that's declared a year from now, none of us has a crystal ball. And we do have some growth. We're not explosive growth. We are growth. We need to manage our growth. But as the mayor said earlier, this is the first step. We, we need to have city staff put together a contingency plan, as you suggested, Dr. Doyle, let's put together a plan. This is what we'll do when this happens. This is what we'll do when this happens. This is what we'll do when this happens. And, and balance that with the growth that we need to have in the city in order to continue to grow. So to Councilmember Lynn, you're absolutely right. Do we need to control growth? Absolutely. Do we need to control how much water we're using? Absolutely. But it's not an either or proposition. And so we put everything together in a contingency plan. And I think that's what we need to do moving forward here is to have city staff put together the plan, as Dr. Doyle's suggested. And so we can move forward, not on supposition, but on what the actual facts are as we move forward. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Knutson, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, if I can, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council. I think in terms of just trying to develop that implementation plan, I think it's important. Councilmember Lynn, to your point, if we can put in certain implementation plan, right? Is there a scenario where the city's going to have to say, no more construction, no more development can occur because of water? no more development can occur because of water is at, the water shortages are that extreme? What does that look like, right? So we can have a conversation in terms of if these things happen, whether it happens in tomorrow or in 50 years. If these things happen, that would trigger a conversation that would require that to be looked at more closely. There's a lot of different parameters in terms of the triggers, right? So there's not just the different shortages that are announced, but also the per capita water usage that we have. And so instilling good water conservation measures and continuing the good efforts of Dr. Wilson that have taken place over the, over the last several decades here in Havasu. But we can, we can do all that. So we don't know what the water shortage is going to look like next year, right? We don't know what ADWR is, how they're going to slice up that pie of what's left over. And we don't know what's going to happen six months or a year after that. But maybe there's certain triggers in terms of that implementation plan. So if these things happen, these things get triggered. And then we can also talk about what we can do today and moving forward in terms of water conservation. So if that makes sense to council, that kind of provides a little bit of guidance to staff in terms of what that plan may look like.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
On that too, is just in the condo complex that we just updated sewer, water, pipe, everything. Our water usage did go down quite a bit. And I'm pretty excited about all the infrastructure we've been putting into the water systems in Lake Havasu City and upgrades and our pipes. And we're moving forward on our own maintenance, and that should help us as well. But I do agree with Councilmember Lynn over here that I am looking for a long-term plan. And I can't just, I'm not a person that could just sit idly by waiting to see when the next report's coming. So interstate pipelines, those kind of things for the federal government, they need to get busy.
You know, I said, I think what we're talking about here with an implementation plan is a long-range plan that has those different triggers, as Mr. Knutson had mentioned. So it gives certainty. Again, certainty is what is going to help drive this forward. So, Dr. Wilson?
If I could just add, the conditions, not just physically or hydrologically, but politically in a way, are going to change as well. The 2007 interim guidelines, interim means temporary. So those are due up in 2026. So just a few years from now, the rules may change on us. The criteria, everything may, may stay the same, may change. We don't, we don't know. So this document could be very fluid. In other words, a living document where we can update it as needed with it. So it wouldn't be just one model. It'd be whatever we can do to adapt to the new situation.
That also includes the DCP. It needs to be renewed, and so.
Yeah, that'll change too.
Yeah, lots of moving pieces. So. All right, is council comfortable with having staff move forward with, within an implementation plan that's long-range and has those different metrics put in place? All right, very good. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned. We'll resume for our normal council meeting in just a couple of minutes.